Mr. Pratherch.
Here.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Mr. Ellerby.
Here.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mayor Snively.
Here. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and move to the first item, which is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Franklin. Are there any changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next, we will move to public participation. We have two proclamations. And I will read the first one. Whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators, between 1933 and 1945, six million were murdered. Roma, gypsies, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. And millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas we, the people of the city of Oxford, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas we, the people of the city of Oxford, should actively re-educate, rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And probably re-educate as well. And whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside for the people of the city of Oxford to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect for all people. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 24th through Sunday, May 1st, 2022, including the day of remembrance known as Yom Hashav, April 28th, 2022. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 24th, through Sunday, May 1st, 2022, as days of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust. In honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Oxford, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. And Amy, are you here to... Oh, Eli's here? The second proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. Parenthetically, I lived in Nebraska for three years and they needed it. And whereas trees can produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, and help to absorb rainwater and slow the velocity of stormwater runoff. And whereas trees are a resource, providing us with wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, paper, and countless other wood products. And whereas associated with the management of the some 3,510 street, park, and public trees in the community, the city of Oxford has fulfilled the National Arbor Day Foundation's requirements for Tree City USA for 26 consecutive years. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the city of Oxford, Ohio, Tree City USA, do hereby proclaim that on April 29th, 2022, the last Friday of the month, the city of Oxford will recognize and participate in the national and international celebration of Arbor Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your support. When we moved to Nebraska, my wife looked around and she said, "Where are the trees?" We finally, and when fall came, we drove to Iowa to find a forest. So it's appropriate that it started in Nebraska, I think. We will move now to public comments, and we welcome comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, please come forward at this time. State your name and address for the record, and we'll give you five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. Amy Shamen, 11 Heather Ridge Court. I just wanted to quickly thank city council and the city staff for the Oxford Tomorrow program that happened yesterday. I really appreciated the briefing and the updates and the summaries of what was gathered previously, as well as the opportunity to continue to participate as a community. I think it's really, really valuable. And I believe that the website that was shared for people who wanted to participate, who were not able to be there last night, is oxtontomorrow.org. I see heads nodding for people who are listening and not watching. So I encourage people to continue to do that and participate. And I look forward to seeing that those comments woven in. In addition, I want to thank the mayor and the city for the proclamation in remembrance of Holocaust and genocide awareness. Unfortunately, it was neither the first nor the last of the genocides that have happened in our world. And unfortunately, there are actions happening today in various parts of the world that are also genocidal. But as someone who is a member of a community that were very significantly decimated for European roots, I appreciate that it's remembered. And your slip of saying "re-educate" is very true there. I saw a statistic, I'm not remembering it precisely off the top of my head right now, of the low percentage of current high school and college-age people who believe that the Holocaust happened or even know what it was is sad. So I appreciate it being something that we pay attention to in our community and that we all worked and achieved of all kinds. Thanks.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to address council tonight? Welcome.
Hey, thank you. My name is Steve Chanel. I live here in Oxford with my wife and my young son. So I noticed on the March 15th meeting that I attended, and then again, April 5th, and then again tonight, I'm seeing a pattern emerge. So I'm curious, when did we stop saying the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of these meetings? And who made that decision?
I did.
Okay. Could you tell me why?
Yeah, I can. All it takes, and I would support it, is a motion. What the city manager and I looked at was the rules of council. And the rules of council identify what should be on the agenda. And while that was done out of tradition, not many years ago, when I was on council before, but in the meantime, it's not in the rules of council. And so the next time we review the rules of council, I think we can bring that up.
Do you have a copy of tonight's agenda in front of you?
Yes, I have a copy of it tonight.
What's the line underneath the 7:30 PM start date, the start time say?
I will say this, we're not having a debate, and so you may make your comment.
I'm not trying to debate you, sir. I'm just asking you, what is the agenda state?
Go ahead and tell me what you think the agenda is.
I don't have it in front of me. Does anybody have the agenda?
It says roll call.
I can correct. I understand that discrepancy.
I must be mistaken, man. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm pulling it up online.
No, I just didn't want to have a debate with you.
I'm not trying to debate anything.
Thank you.
The Granicus tool that we use online does not allow us to make edits. And it, we just, it's a template that's locked in, and it does say Pledge of Allegiance online, and the printed version does not. So there is a discrepancy based with the tool that we use to build the agenda.
Is the Granicus online agenda valid?
It is what, it is the tool we use to publish the agenda. And we can't, we've asked for a template to be changed, and the, one of the reasons we're not, we're looking at changing from Granicus.
So how do the people of Oxford get a copy of the agenda? Any councilor can propose changes to the rules of council. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Pratherch, seconded by Councilor Franklin. Are there any items to be removed? There's only one. So I assume not. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Can I just introduce some thanks? I know that the minutes have been evolving to try to improve as we try to develop a more efficient system. And I appreciate the moves to try to make them more transparent and link to the videos. So thank you to Heather and Jessica and anybody else for trying to make... We went to the straight action minutes, and they were not very informative. So I like the links to the videos. And the transcript, although imperfect, is, I think we're moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Okay, we will move then to resolutions. Let me read the resolution.
A resolution opposing the adoption of House Bill 563, currently being considered by a committee of the Ohio House of Representatives, which proposes to limit local regulation of short-term rental property.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been...
Seconded.
And seconded, French and Ellerby, and are you going to talk about it, Doug?
Yes. House Bill 563, which is being considered by the Ohio House, State and Local Government Committee. They've had three hearings on it. Would preempt local governments from regulating or prohibiting the use of short-term rental properties. As you know, the city of Oxford has adopted reasonable and common sense regulations of short-term rentals to protect our residential neighborhoods. We require short-term rentals to complete an application and a property inspection. We limit the maximum numbers of days that a structure may be rented to 90 days per year. And we also require short-term rentals to pay the city's hotel and lodging tax at 6% total. So as I said earlier, it's being considered by the House, State, and Local Government Committee. They've had three hearings on it. I believe they're in recess now, but we feel that this is a clear assault on our home rule authority granted under the Ohio Constitution. And we have then on the legislative agenda this resolution in opposition to House Bill 563. And I would urge council to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Seeing none, councilors? Any comments, questions?
Thank you. And I, we have to do battle on this one with other municipalities. I hope we join with them because this is our purview.
And this is important.
All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Sure. A resolution approving the paid parental leave policy memorandum of understanding between the Non-Commissioned Police Division Employees Union and the city of Oxford, and authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Ellerby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor French.
So I have basically the same report for the next three resolutions. As you know, the city included paid parental leave in the employee handbook and wage and salary ordinance that we adopted last year. And this provision allows for eight weeks of paid parental leave that does not require the employee to use their accrued leave. And after eight weeks of paid parental leave, the employee may use an additional four weeks of unpaid parental leave, during which an employee may substitute sick leave or vacation. The provision did not extend to our three police unions, the sergeants and lieutenants, the patrol, and the non-commissioned officers. All three of those police contracts currently have a maternity provision, which allows the employee to use vacation, sick leave, or unpaid leave. Two of the unions, the sergeants and lieutenants and patrol, currently have a provision for paternity leave. So we're recommending that we swap out that language for the language that we have in our employee handbook. And that's what you have on the agenda tonight. And this would make our policy consistent with what we have in the handbook. So we're recommending adoption of all three of these resolutions as you read them.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Hearing none, councilors? Any comments?
I think this is great. I think it demonstrates our values and what we care about. Happy to do it.
It's good to keep all the employees on the same page. So I'm glad to bring the police force onto it.
I would note that it is, I mean, this is kind of an unusual situation to, through a memorandum of understanding, to modify a contract. I mean, unionization, it's, there's contracts on certain periods. But it's nice to think that unionization and the union and management relationship doesn't need to be adversarial all the time, and that it doesn't need to be inflexible in the face of change. So if we're able to do this, you know, I'm glad that we're able to do this and not have to wait until the next contract negotiation.
I agree. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Please read number three.
A resolution approving the paid parental leave policy memorandum of understanding between the Oxford Police Officers, FOP Lodge 38, and the city of Oxford, and authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I assume the staff report is the same?
If the staff report is the same, unless you have questions for it.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? You'll have another chance if you think of it. Any additional discussion on council? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is adopted. Please read number four.
A resolution approving the paid parental leave policy memorandum of understanding between the police sergeants and lieutenants, FOP Lodge 38, and the city of Oxford, and authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Ellerby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor French. Staff report is the same?
Yes.
Anyone from the public? Okay. Any councilors on this one? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that resolution is adopted. We have no first readings. We have one second reading. And I would invite our clerk to read it when she's ready.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow for the re-establishment of a fraternity use located at 406 East Withrow Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay. And is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Ellerby, and seconded. Okay, by Councilor Pratherch. Sam?
Anything new here?
Nothing new. Thank you. Nope. But I can give a summary again if you'd like.
I think we had it last time, so, okay. All right. If there's questions, we'll call you back. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Hearing none, councilors? Any further discussion?
Sure. I would just like to, so I was a dissenting vote in the planning commission. I just wanted to explain that briefly. So I felt that there was some inconsistency in how we address parking regulations. But I understand, and I don't want to get in the way of this. It's not a biased inconsistency. It's more about competing values. So you have the issue of not wanting to burden streets and parking. But at the same time, you want a walkable city. You want more affordable housing. You want to preserve green spaces. You want to reduce pavement. And so it's been somewhat inconsistent, and something that we're going to work on the planning commission. But that's why I decided, not because this is problematic or in any other way.
Okay. So this is reverting from what it was originally built as, with the same owners. And so it was their fraternity. It was a church facility for a while, and now it's going to be the fraternity again.
And I would note that the main, I mean, I think there was agreement on almost everything except for parking and the size of the sign. And I know the applicants would wish for a sign that were larger, maybe in line with what the historical non-conforming size of the sign was. But one of the things that I, you know, when I teach planning, is it's all about fairness. And so if you extend to one person something, you have to be prepared to extend it to everyone else. And we have to try to be very careful with signage size. So I know it wasn't quite as large as the applicant would wish, but it's also not as small as our code would probably require it to be. But I think what we worked out was a compromise, and so I think it's fair.
Would you please call a roll?
Mr. Bracken.
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. Pratherch.
Yes.
Mayor Snively.
Yes. So ordinance is adopted. We'll move to announcements and communications, and I'll begin with city manager Doug Elliott.
I'll just share with you one thing I did put in my written report. But when we look at our water and sewer utility rates, they compare very favorably to statewide averages. Each year, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency completes a survey of residential water and sewer rates. The rates are calculated on an annual basis and are based on water consumption of 700, excuse me, 7,756 gallons per month, or 1,037 cubic feet per month. So the 2019 average annual residential sewer rate in Ohio was $749, and this was a 4.5% increase over 2018. The city of Oxford's annual sewer rate for the same amount of consumption was $544. So it's 27.4% less than the statewide average. When we look at our residential water rate, the average Ohio residential water rate was $697, which was a 4.2% increase over 2018. The city of Oxford's annual water rate for that same amount of consumption was $421, which is a 39.6% less than the statewide average. I might also share with you that in comparison to the Southwest Regional Water District, their rate is $622 for that amount of consumption. And the city's water rate in comparison to them is 32.3% less. As you probably know, the city of Oxford last raised water and sewer rates in 2016 by 2%. At that time, we also lowered refuse rates. And prior to that, we had not raised water rates since 2019, and sewer rates had not been raised since 1997. So as you can see, we have very competitive water and sewer utility rates. You know, we're fortunate because we made some improvements back in 1992 to fund a new water treatment plant, additional wells off US 127 and a transmission line. And to pay for those, we issued debt. And in 2014, we made the last debt service payment of just under $900,000. Those improvements were needed to increase the water capacity because, Mike has shared with me the story about the 1989 water crisis. And I think I knew some students, maybe that contributed to some of that as well. So we currently have no outstanding debt in the water or sewer funds. But we do, of course, anticipate a water rate increase needed to finance the water softening project when we get into that. We're looking to develop the, you know, the RFP now for the engineering for that. And we'll be having a work session with council on that when we get to that point. But, you know, we have very competitive rates, and I just wanted to share that with the council and the public. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing tonight? Thank you. Chief?
One thing I noticed not on the agenda that I should have already raised with Heather, but I thought I would make the announcement just a bit early, is on May 12th, we have a Police Community Relations and Review Commission meeting at 7 o'clock here at the courthouse. So I should have gotten that added in, but I'll just make the announcement for the public. There's still plenty of time. I just wanted to say a few comments about a situation we had last night. I'm sure you heard about it. There was a lot of media coverage where an armed suspect was barricaded along with other citizens, bystanders. So we were already pretty shorthanded when that started, when it all kicked off. But we were able to get off-duty personnel in pretty quickly to help in a good, a quick manner. And then, of course, when we called out the SWAT team, which we're a member of, we received numerous resources from all around the county. So I was just very proud of how our team operated last night. We handled that situation. We were able to gain compliance from the suspect and revolve the violent situation without injury to anyone involved, and really without any property damage, which doesn't always happen. So it doesn't always end that way, and we've seen that in other situations we've been involved in. And we don't always control how it ends either. But I just wanted to thank, you know, say, last night it worked well. It was an efficient system. We take time, time's on our side, and we inconvenience some people by keeping that area shut down. But in the end, it's worth it because there was no loss of life, no injury. And just a shout out to our team who came in and helped, and also, you know, the other agencies who came in, Butler County Sheriff's Office, and all the other police departments that are part of the regional SWAT team, so.
You're to be congratulated.
Thank you.
It really was a successful evening in that respect. Could you remind the public who may be watching, if they don't have Nixle, how to get that on their phone?
Sure. So one of the things with that situation, you know, there's a lot of support around that that you don't always see, and that one of those things is media and getting messaging across. And sometimes we don't always get those messages out. But, you know, last night with the prolonged situation, we were able to get a message out through Nixle. It's a public safety alerting tool. If you go to nixle, N-I-X-L-E dot com, you can sign up and get public safety alerts, which may include things like tornado warnings, you know, fire emergencies or road closures, and as if last night was a shelter in place to the folks who lived in that area, and also to ask to avoid the area. So it's a good tool to sign up for. And I will say, when we put those alerts out, we knew this was going to cause us more work with media. But we want to try to spread that message, just in case, so we can, you know, avoid people in the area.
Thank you. I encourage people to sign up for Nixle if you haven't already done so. It is not overused. It is rare that they come out, but when they do, it's important. And I think it's good for people to be aware. Thank you. Joe?
Nothing.
Thank you. Okay. Chief?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Sam?
As several have said, Oxford Tomorrow Workshop went well last night. And thanks for many of those of you that attended. And publicly, we had around 100 or so. Went really, really well. It was a very positive and organized environment for collaboration and ideas from the community. So the next several weeks, we'll be processing those many ideas and the hundreds of post-it notes and verbal conversations to some extent that were contributed into what will be, we hope, realistic goals and objectives that we'll bring back to you later, probably early fall. And then we'll have something in front of you, but there will be another, there'll be some steering committee meetings, and then a more of a public open house to kind of bring back all of that into a more defined plan. So looking forward to that. And there was some data that was presented for those of you... And there was some data that was presented for those of you that, as reviewed the slides in advance at the steering committee meeting, that some of the voices that we haven't heard a lot from have been the lower-income community members. So, but with your contributions and your leadership over the past many months, some of those ideas that we think will be helpful, that are needed by the lower-income community, have already been folded into some of your goals, so, but to the extent that you can help with that and allow some of those needs to be brought forth over the next several weeks, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Jessica Green. Welcome.
Good evening, just wanted to give you some updates. But first, I also want to thank Sam and Zachary Moore from the Community Development Department for, and MKSK for the great visioning workshop last night, they did a tremendous job, and they really have been, put a lot of hours into it, so thank you. Along those same lines, the online survey for those who were not able to attend last night will go out, we hope, tomorrow, and that survey will be open until May sixth. So we'll start publishing that here tomorrow or the next day, make sure people are aware of that deadline, and we encourage anyone who wasn't able to attend in person to please put their feedback onto that survey. And then, just wanted to let you know that Heather and I are actively researching agenda and management tools to make sure that we're using the right one, and also Mike Dreisbach and Pat O'Malley are researching our AV equipment to make sure that we're kind of using the proper tools and researching if we need to make any upgrades. So stay tuned on that progress. And that's my only other update for you tonight, it just seemed like a short night to give you an opportunity to let you know what we're working on. So we are actively, from your retreat, developing a new DORA application for an extended area and setting up dates for the Red Brick Fridays, and we're developing a budget for that business, a special assessment area. So we hope to have those, to be coming forward to you the next couple of months. And then more longer term, we continue, we've started researching childcare availability in the city of Oxford, both in-home and commercial and vouchers and not. So that's a little bit of a longer-term research project, but we're hoping to get some good data to share with you. And then we're developing models with our American Rescue Plan Fund in both the housing category and economic development category. So we're really trying to do a lot of research and bring forward to you what we think are going to be some best practices for the use of those dollars. So that's what's going on behind the scenes right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing from the law department? Go to Glenn.
I'd just like to thank the city and its departments for the excellent communication that we've had so far, you know, just as a regular citizen, I feel like I'm very informed about the various things that have been going on, whether it's an emergency or otherwise. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Glenn.
I'm going to do some reiteration, the Oxford Tomorrow event, kudos to everybody. It was really well-run, very well-attended. I know that I'm going to put the link to the survey on all of my social media pages, so if you're out there watching tonight and haven't had a chance to voice your opinions yet, please let us know at oxtfordtomorrow.org, and stay tuned to that page for any other public input sessions. You know, Sam mentioned that we have one more public kind of workshop session coming up, that date and location is to be determined. And then I also want to tip my cap to our Oxford Police Department. I tangentially know through my work how hard it is to coordinate a crisis when, you know, counseling schools on how to handle that, to do that for a whole town and a whole apartment complex full of people on a very highly-traveled road and keep everybody safe is a huge deal. So just, I, you know, I'm very proud of our town for a lot over the last couple of days, so, you know, kudos to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what was said, and to also thank Chief Jones and OPD for the excellent work in the crisis management last night. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, but I wanted to add how excited I am about potential childcare possibilities and affordable housing going forward, so thanks for that too. The staff and everybody involved in the city has been pretty great lately, so thanks for all the work.
So, don't want to reiterate other than it was, was a great team effort that was brought to it last night, obviously our staff, between Sam and Zach and Jessica and all the interns, Casey was there, Manning, so we had staff and department heads there, MKS Day is doing a great job. But our citizen invested a lot of passion in that event last night. I mean, a hundred people came out who are really, believe in the plan, they wouldn't come out on a Wednesday night if they, if they didn't care about the topics and they didn't really, if they weren't optimistic that we would take them seriously. I know from some experience that just because you make a plan doesn't mean, plans don't implement themselves, and you have to be ready to take all those ideas and figure out how to translate them into action. I think we've made enormous progress that way, but you can, we just don't want to do a disservice to our citizens who invest all that energy in us to not then be ready to do all that we can. So it's a long-term, I mean, we're right to plan, but the, the challenge will then be ours to figure out as, as a city, as an organization, how do we, you know, figure out how to eat the elephant one bite at a time, and, and set realistic expectations of what possible. So I'm, I'm proud of the cultural change that we've made, but it's really possible to write a plan and not use it. So, you know, I think, given how much investment people making as a city, as our tax dollars and staff, but, but the public, we, it's really incumbent on us to just respect and thank the people by, by, by figuring out a mechanism for, for doing these things that they're asking us to do, so.
I want to thank chief, members of police department. I think the city of Oxford is blessed to have such excellent employees across the board, and none are a better example of that than our police department. And please convey that all of council very much appreciates them. A number of people ask, well, when are things going to start happening again and things uptown? Well, we had Earth Day, that was pretty well-attended. We had this wonderful planning session last night. But coming up this Saturday, two things that you may be interested in that are big community events and that you can take part in, and the weather should cooperate, it should be sunny and warm. And one of those is the Sixty-Sixth Annual Pancake Day, put on by Oxford Kiwanis Club, and you can get tickets, or you can pay an extra dollar at the door if you want to. Almost everybody in the community tends to want to go to it, and you see everybody there, and the money that is spent goes to helping kids in our community, and I think it's a really good cause, and I hope that you have an opportunity to go. This is the last pitch I'll make, I have some few tickets left. The other thing is that Electric Roots Music Festival is also going to be going on this weekend, and I hope you have a chance to go uptown and enjoy the music, and there will be music from. Yeah, there's quite a few performers, and, do you know the time?
It's all day, it's like two to, I believe, nine. Yeah, it's, it's a full day, so.
So get out there, enjoy the music, enjoy congregating with your fellow citizens. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That was a hard one to get.
Seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.